I'm going to call the meeting reporter at 8:37. And.
Yes, Anderson?
Yes.
Henderson.
Yes.
Percy?
Here.
Amara? Gatter?
Here.
Sim? Rosner?
Here.
Nunez?
Here.
Soye? Brown?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Lashefki Kabilius?
Here.
Roach?
Here.
We have forum.
Great, thank you. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Next.
And Tracy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Henderson?
Here.
Yes?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. We're going to go into closed session for the purpose of the negotiating matters and review the draft minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting from April and May of 2021. Sorry about that.
Employment, performance, compensation of specific employees. Percy?
Here.
I'm sorry.
Yes, motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session? Yes, no, or abstain? Can I get clarity on the purposes again? I heard Tracy say something and I heard you say maybe not, and then...
Thanks, Eric. Yes, for three purposes: negotiating matters, to review the draft Board of Trustees meeting minutes from April and May of 2021, and to discuss the compensation, employment, and performance of specific employees.
Okay, thanks.
Rosner?
Yes.
Nunez?
Yes.
Soye? I'm sorry, can I hear? Brown?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Lashefki Kabilius?
Yes. Oops.
Roach?
Yes.
All right, we are in, I'm sorry, circle down. Anderson?
Yes.
We're in closed session.
Did I say yes? This is Goddard.
All right, I didn't realize you were on. All right, so you are here and on.
Yeah, here and on, uh huh.
Purposes, I just want to make sure that I have trustee Brown is on the phone, trustee Nunez is on the phone, and trustee Sim, I'm sorry, not Sim, trustee Goddard is on the phone, is that correct?
Well, I'm on Zoom, but yes.
Yes. All right, thank you. And, okay.
Lynn is trying to get it.
All right, we are in closed session, so take what you need. I encourage you to take your laptops with you, anything else that you need. We're going to move over to the into space and open session, and so first we'll call the roll. Before we do that, really quickly, just a tech question. Yes, go ahead, Eric. Do you see my face at all? Does it matter that I'm on screen for the Zoom or not? It's a, for the board's purposes, no, we are just hearing you. You're sort of like, actually odd-like right now because your voice is just, it's all around us. I just wanted to make sure, because I can turn my camera off and have better reception. Thanks. Okay, so.
Anderson?
Here.
Henderson?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Goddard?
Here.
Rosner?
Here.
Nunez?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Lashefki Kabilius? Roach?
Here.
Okay, we have forum.
Great, thank you. So, welcome, everyone. Thank you to our IT folks and Cabinet for all of the extra work that you've done to make today happen for the board, so the board can do its business. Very much appreciate that. A big welcome to Dr. Evan Glazer, our new president. It has been fantastic to get to know you over the last several months. From my personal standpoint, Evan, I'm humbled by your work ethic, your zeal for IMSA, your commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. The expertise that you bring from reopening a very complex organization in New York to IMSA is really helpful and very timely, so really appreciate that. And really, I'm just amazed at how you are working so hard to deeply understand IMSA and all of its facets, the people who make up IMSA, which is the heart of IMSA, and you just have this profound glee for IMSA's heart, and really appreciate that. So, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and IMSA community, welcome to your first board meeting. I also want to say thank you to Dr. Storm Robinson. I think he is over there. Thank you. Storm, you were a bridge builder in so many ways these last several months in the transition and as interim principal, interim president. You grounded IMSA in your three priorities of continuing the work of diversity, equity, and inclusion, of staying very positive and highlighting the positive aspects of IMSA even during this global pandemic, and you very smoothly continued to facilitate the plan to return to learning and working. So, you, I just want to thank you on behalf of the board for your grace, your humility, your vision, and your execution. These are all wonderful qualities of leadership, and that benefited IMSA. And then there's one more thing. Of course, Storm, we wanted to highlight that you wore another hat while you were interim president, and that's as the executive director of Professional Field Services. And so I know that you were doing lots of extra hours and really wanted, from the board, to say thank you for all of that leadership. And I know one of the highlights that we have in the dashboard is around the number of contact hours with non-IMSA students for STEM inclusion. The goal was 10,000 hours, and you and your team, Storm, achieved 22,000 hours. So that is really extraordinary during a global pandemic. I want to say thank you. And through to its mission, IMSA's adapting and leading. Vaccination clinics have already taken place, and Alexis Thomas just wanted to say thank you for your extraordinary leadership. I see you over there. And doing, again, countless hours to bring together a terrific team, and I just was hearing from you some more about the kind of work that you have been doing, so thank you. And want to say thank you to the person here on my right, Tracy Ellis, who has also done extraordinary amount of work behind the scenes that we often don't know about, but makes things work very well in so many different hats that you wear, Tracy. Thank you for, the one I want to point out or highlight is creating the new conduit to the public. You did that quickly and very efficiently, and so now we have this process and protocol, so thank you for that. I also want to highlight Dr. Comfort Quadji Anderson for, if you look at the academic calendar that is proposed for the board to consider, it shows the move-in days just in a month from now, and already, Dr. Quadji Anderson, you've done so much to prepare the school year for our faculty and staff engagement. So there's so much going on. I know there's programs going on right now at IMSA. That's really showing IMSA as resilient and innovating and adapting even during this global pandemic. So, thank you to all of our folks who are making that happen, and welcome to our new president, Evan Glazer. Do any other trustees have comments at this time? All right, then we'll go to our board business action item, and I'll hand that over to our president, Evan Glazer.
Yes.
Thank you very much. So, we made two changes. One of them, parent day was supposed to be on the 11th of September, so we moved that from the 11th to the 18th, so that's one of the changes. And then if you scroll down to, oh, we can see it, the October, we had the Lenerman and Alumni Awards. As you can see, it's going to be on the 22nd. We were supposed to have that in May, and so we're combining the two, and those are going to happen in October. So, those are the only two changes that we made to the calendar. Otherwise, everything else stays the same.
Any questions from trustees? Great, thanks for making those adjustments. Can I have a motion to approve the fiscal year '22 academic calendar revised? So, move for a second. And Tracy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Park? Brown?
Yes.
Nunez? Nunez? Rosner?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Percy? Henderson?
Yes.
Anderson? Lashefki Kabilius?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, congratulations, Dr. Glazer. You have your first agenda item of board business tasks. You're at 100%. The next item is our consent agenda, and our path practice is that it's bundled together. So we consider the consent agenda as a whole item. If a trustee wants to discuss any particular item, then we ask trustees to talk to Dr. Glazer at least 48 hours in advance to pull that item for discussion. There was no request, so can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? And Tracy, when you're ready, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Lashefki Kabilius?
Yeah.
Park?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Nunez? Rosner?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Percy? Henderson?
Yes.
Anderson? Motion passed? Oh, Roach, sorry. Go back to the top.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great, thank you. Yeah. That sounds like a great question for HR.
It does, and I don't have the turnover numbers, our percent currently. Generally, I think historically, we've been at about 5%. I'll calculate. We'll get that information too.
That's a great question, especially considering, you know, pandemic. Yeah, make sure it's in it, okay. Okay, so our next agenda item is our discussion items, and really excited about the two pieces that we have today for discussion of the board. And that's what we really want as a board, is we do our preparation ahead of time. You give us lots and lots to read. We do that ahead of time, and then we really want to guard a good 20 minutes or so for discussion and engagement. So I'll turn things over to President Evan Glazer.
Excuse me, Evan, I'm getting messages that, can you use the mic?
Can you hear me? Am I, can you hear me now? Okay, sorry about that.
I can hear you.
Well, our first deep dive will focus on the cultural competency and the intercultural development inventory. As you know, we've had, we established a three-year equity and excellence plan, and one strand of that was to establish a baseline of examining cultural competency across the faculty and staff. And I'd like to hand it over to Tracy Ellis to provide us a brief overview, and then questions for discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. So, as the board knows, we administered the intercultural development inventory in February, received our results, and presented them in a town hall to the community, the employees, in, I believe that was April. And the IDI measures where individuals and organizations are. We did not do the individual part. We did the organizational measurement, and it measures and tells us where we perceive that we are, which is our perceived orientation, and then our developmental orientation is where we actually are. Our perceived orientation, or where we thought we were, is at acceptance. Our developmental orientation and where we actually are is at minimization, and there are some definitions in the materials that we provided for you. Both a quick definition of minimization is that when minimization exists in organizations, diversity often feels not heard. There's a fuller definition in there for you. It is the colorblind. When I look at you, I don't see color. When I look at you, I don't see difference. You don't want to focus on that stage. So we have plans for how we're going to continue to try to move our cultural competency chops up. We have our baseline now, and we'll be re-administering this every February, and so that we can try to measure this. I should point out, the reason that we're doing all of this is because in the board-approved equity and excellence policy, one of the outcomes is that we are going to provide professional learning that continuously develops the cultural competence and equity awareness of staff, board members, and external partners. And so we measured to get a baseline now, and so that we can move this work forward and continue to measure. And so that's all I'm going to say about this, because we've talked about this, and you have it in the report. And I certainly want, we have some questions for you to consider at the end. We also, and Dr. Adrian Coleman is on the phone, I believe. Dr. Coleman, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here. Hello, everyone.
And so we also have Dr. Coleman on the phone to answer any questions that you all may have about. Can you use the mic? The can, the audience can't hear you.
Okay. So, there are a number of action items that are listed, and my question is, are these actually going to be implemented? These are recommendations. Is there any movement on these fronts? And if there is, are we engaging the people involved in this process, like the faculty, who would need to implement these changes as well? So is this top-down? Is this, you know, engaging the whole community? How is it being done? It's my question.
That's a great question, and to do any of this equity work, it can't be top-down. We cannot dictate there will be equity at IMSA, or there will be cultural competence at IMSA. So we definitely are engaging the community, and if you look at the first, it says recommendation, but it really is a strategy, rejuvenating the math problem sets. That is ongoing. We have an external consultant that has been working with the math faculty, has provided a couple of sessions with them, and is currently revising the math problem sets to bring a more culturally responsive lens to those math problem sets. And we'll continue working with Dr. Quadji Anderson and the math faculty. And again, with the second one, utilizing culturally responsive education, Dr. Quadji Anderson is, that is part of her work. We from the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion are partnering in that with not only academics, but also with the folks in Center for Teaching and Learning, who are out there doing outreach in school districts and writing curriculum, so that we ensure that that curriculum is culturally responsive as well. So we're engaging external consultants, using our own in-house and internal expertise in this area. But this is broadly across the organization, and we are trying to engage everyone in this work, because that's the only way that we're going to be successful.
Can I just piggyback on the question that she asked? Who developed the recommendations that are shared in this report? Or how were they developed?
Well, some of these are part of the development, the plan that we have, and Dr. Coleman worked really hard on that. We have input from Cabinet. We have input from some of the experts that we consult with. It's mine and Dr. Coleman's expertise in this area. It's also, if you remember, part of the external expertise that we had was from the Math Center. You've probably heard us talk about them in the past, who are experts in educational equity specifically, and they worked with us for about two, two and a half years, and took us through a, we used their data collection protocol and data meaning-making sessions to identify the work, the equity work that needs to be done in the organization. So we've got a lot of input from internal stakeholders, our external expertise, and our internal expertise. Dr. Coleman, would you like to add anything to that? Did you hear the question?
I did hear the question, and just would add that the plan we developed was truly data-formed, and it was inclusive of the voices of our faculty, staff, as well as our students and our parents.
And we had some external, yes, parents, and a couple of other stakeholders, former employees that we brought back to come back into the conversations and bring perspective and to help us with data collection. And so it was just very representative of our, fully of our stakeholders in speaking into the work that needs to happen to meet the goals that we. Does that answer your question?
Any other questions? Go ahead, Kathleen.
At the town hall, and I think you said April or May, where you could have talked through the results of the, can you talk a little bit more about what kind of feedback you got from the faculty and staff? We know it's been a, you know, a bit of a rocky road, and getting by has been really challenging at times, so I'm just curious how that conversation unfolded.
So, it was primarily the presentation by Dr. Hairwood from IDI LLC. Most of the questions that I remember, and Dr. Coleman, please jump in, were people were less focused on our organizational results than, can I get my individual score, is what people wanted to know. Dr. Coleman?
Yes, I definitely agree with that. I get a number of emails requesting for people to receive their individual scores. And we get pricing on that, but just did not have the budget for it this year.
I would love to follow up on that. First, just say, like, in the spirit of IMSA's work of, like, getting a baseline that you set in the beginning, like, that's really powerful to know, like, where are we at in terms of cultural competence? So this is, this makes a lot of sense and is part of the equity excellence plan that the board approved. Can you, do you have sort of like a couple of broad strokes of, like, this is where, how faculty or staff have interpreted the results and kind of what they're perceiving, or maybe it's all over the map, what's your sense of that? Of the organizational, it's not individual, it's at an organizational level?
Yeah, I think that I don't have a good feel across the organization as to what people think. We have had a very specific conversation at the senior leadership team level about the result and understanding what does minimization mean, and what does it mean specifically for IMSA? And what do we do about it as senior leaders here? And so I think the conversation at the senior leadership team was, I think appropriately concerned. You know, I think it's shocking, you know, it's kind of shocking, because, again, the organization as a whole perceived itself to be further along than we are. And so to get the results and find out, oh, this is where we actually are, I think it took a bit to, you know, take that all in, and then figure out with, you know, collectively as leaders, what is it that we should be doing to move? Like, we could do concrete things, like rejuvenize, rejuvenate the math sets and focus on faculty with culturally responsive education. But again, the work is the entire Academy's work. So what is it that we need to be doing as leaders to ensure that our leadership practices are culturally responsive, and that our leadership practices, that we're building cultural competence in our teams? And so to that end, we are bringing back the Pacific Education Group, who did, who is the creator, Dr. Glenn Singleton is the creator of the Courageous Conversations About Race Framework. They did a Courageous Conversations training for us back in the spring. They're coming back for a day and a half in August to continue the work with the senior leadership team specifically on cultural competence. And the reason I'm really, really heavily focused on the senior leadership team, which includes obviously Cabinet and now Dr. Glazer, is I may have said it to this board before, but my colleagues know I say it all the time. Stole this from somebody else, not original, but you can't teach what you don't know, and you can't lead where you don't know. So, from my perspective, you know, Dr. Coleman and I have talked about this, and as the, you know, leading this work, we have to start with the senior leadership team and ensure that we're cascading, that we're comfortable as senior leaders with this work and building our own cultural competency, so then we can step confidently and competently out into the organization to lead the work and cascade it down throughout the organization. So we have, I'm sorry, I keep fogging up. We have a very intentional focus right now on both senior leadership team, and then Dr. Quadji Anderson is very heavily focused with the teachers, with the faculty.
I hope that answers the question.
So I have a follow-up question, which maybe relates a little bit to later agenda items. First of all, I want to thank Evan for sharing with us the results of the SAT surveys. If you actually do a deep dive into them, you actually get to the same issue. And one thing I didn't hear from you commenting in terms of the people who were giving input were the alumni. And it really struck me that some of the alumni had very, very specific suggestions about how they would like to see IMSA change as a broader environment to have been kind of more supportive for them. So, and I know this came under, you know, do SATs matter? But in fact, there really was enormous amount of information there. So, my question is, is that group being consulted? And are these also things that are being considered by the team strategically as you guys are moving forward?
I missed part of your question. In terms of engaging with the law?
Is this not working?
No, I'm sorry, I just missed a part of it.
Okay. Um, what, sorry, you don't know what my question was. My question is, is that group, the alumni group, part of the group that's giving you advice about how to move forward? And are their suggestions being taken into consideration as you are moving forward strategically, saying, these are the changes we need to make? And particularly because on some level, it's a broad change that needs to be made. It's not about the math curriculum or the social science or whatever, right? It's really the institution, the culture, exactly.
And it really struck me that they had some very, very specific suggestions, you know, that related to their experiences and things that would apply.
So, I guess what I'm asking is, I see that these are your immediate, you know, items that you're working on, but are you looking at these bigger questions? Are you involving these groups who actually have these experiences and so on?
I think the short answer, and then I'm going to invite Dr. Coleman into this answer as well, the short answer is, yes, we are listening to the alums and hearing from them, particularly, as you know, we spent. Particularly, as you know, we spent quite a bit of time with Black at IMSA, which, and then the spinoff from that was the new Black Alumni Association and very clearly heard from them about the work that they want done to feel safer, better, make things better for future black students there. I think we can, I think we can absolutely get a better job at IMSA. We're up there. Dr. Coleman?
Yeah, so I'll just add that we actually this past year partnered with our Black Alumni Association in the rejuvenation of our Promising Excel Extension Program, which is specifically a tutoring and mentoring program for our culturally, linguistically and economically diverse students. So they've been involved with our, with our students this past year in providing tutoring and mentoring. And it's been a great partnership and we will continue that this year as well.
I'm sorry, say that again? We have. Is there a Hispanic organization? There is a cultural group. Yes, there is a cultural, a cultural group. I also don't want to forget that we did the alumni survey as well to get feedback on, on culture in these matters at IMSA.
Other questions or comments from trustees?
No, we would love to hear feedback from you all on the questions that we posed because it certainly will help inform our work as well. One of them was around whether or not this board would like to take the IDI as a board. I mean, individually be taking, but get your, your board results as opposed to individual. And if yes, would you prefer that it be administered externally? Dr. Coleman and I are certified administrators, as is Dr. Sitzel Pareha as well.
I, I would like to strongly encourage the board to take this. Is there, anybody wants to comment on that or caution against it?
I just have a follow-up. Would we then be receiving cultural competence training?
Well, so we'd certainly talk about the results and then talk with the board about, you know, with Dr. Glazer's input, what, so then now what? What would we like to do? Here's where you are and what are the next steps? That would be a conversation that Dr. Coleman and I, with Dr. Glazer, would love to have with the board.
You look like you want to say something else.
I just don't think we will commit to the assessment without committing to the follow-up themes.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. So if we're going to do the self-assessment, we should also commit as a board to, to training. I see some heads nodding. Is that, we have consensus on that? That's something we have to vote on. How do you feel about that? Yeah, okay. Anybody on the phone who, Eric or Luis or Ty want to comment?
I raised my hand.
Yeah, me too. But if I can't be seen, that would make sense.
Raise your voice because I can't hear, see you when you raise your hand. Go ahead, Ty.
For something like this where you're doing an assessment and it is going to different corners of the organization, I think that it can only be beneficial that the board of trustees would participate, will find out something out about ourselves individually and we can contribute from our organizational positions. But I think it is, you know, we're not navel gazing here. And so the question would be, as we go into this, really understanding what's the point? So certainly personally, there's a willingness to participate, but also with, it's a carrot and a stick. So it's, my stick would be, yes, what are we going to do with it? On the question of externally administered or internally, I would really, I would prefer to go with the externally administered, just really understanding and appreciating that we have that internal expertise that could then be relied upon to, to interpret and to do quite a bit of the follow-up.
Okay. Any other comments? It's, I think we have consensus to, for the board to also participate in the assessment and then to figure out what does the follow-up training look like? And probably then taking the assessment again in a year so we can see what the growth looks like.
Would that be solely the group analysis or would you like the, we'll engage with our external consultant, would you like the individual analysis as well? Understanding that pursuant to IDI protocol, you won't, you can't just have your individual reports without an individual meeting, without individual meetings with the IDI qualified administrator. So will, it will be getting your individual reports and a 30 to 45 minute session with them. You can't have individual reports.
Okay.
A debrief.
Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that piece. I, I believe if we're, first, I need to know the cost of some of that. Like I understand that there, you know, cost, we, like what are we doing this for, et cetera, et cetera? And so we should actively not really pay attention to that much when it comes to cost. However, if we have the capacity and the expertise to do this internally and that costs us nothing versus something that's done externally that might cost us significantly more, then I think that we should go ahead and use the internal folks to, to help us through this, especially since these are the folks that we work with and, and are going to be a part of this journey with us. And I, I agree that we can't just take the assessment, we need to have the follow-up that goes along with it. And I think that us as a board doing this makes sense. As an individual, I don't know whether or not we need to get into the individual reports because I don't see any of the other, I mean, at least I don't believe that any of the other groups are, are getting the individual devotion that's needed, especially if we're going to do this comprehensive kind of journey afterwards. So I actually argue, again, depending on cost, to keep it internal, do it as a board, get the group, group feedback and analysis and then move forward from that.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, I think, go ahead Kathleen.
I would, I also think though that we should have the same parameters as the Cabinet and the faculty and the staff have had. And so if it was an internal assessment, I'm sorry, an assessment done with internal versus external facilitators, I think we should model it the same way for the board as well as if it's group versus individual. And if we're going to be doing this assessment for the next handful of years, we can always, you know, switch and do individuals next year, since it sounds like that wasn't an option for the staff and the faculty this term.
Yes, in February, we didn't have any internal, we had not been, been qualified yet. And so that's why we used external going forward. We won't be, the plan is to do it internally, but certainly defer to whichever way the board wants to go for this first round with you all. It was done externally for, for, for all of the staff.
I agree with Kathleen. Okay, so it sounds like we have consensus. Board will take the assessment. It will be at the organizational level, not the individual level yet. And we'll leave that open for exploration in the future. And we're committing as a board to also do the training. And this is in arm-in-arm with faculty, staff to learn and grow in our cultural competence.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for, on this.
I'm sorry, one further question about this. When we say the board, is that all the trustees and the president? Because I hope our president will join us.
Sounds like yes, Eric. Okay, great.
Could I just ask one question? Clarification, are, are we planning for the initial one to do internal or external? Because I agree with what Kathleen said. I think we all need to be on the same page. And so whatever was done in the past, I think at least for the first time should be done for the board as well.
I have it noted here to engage our consultant.
Okay. It just wasn't clear to me what the decision was. Thanks.
Okay. Great, thank you. Let's move to our, that was terrific. Again, IMSA is sort of supposed to be a learning laboratory. This is, I think, a concrete example of being a learning laboratory. So thank you on your leadership on that. Our next discussion item is the SAT research study.
Request to use the mic.
Thanks for the reminder, Ty.
I, I think maybe by the fifth time I'll get it right, right? I apologize. So under Dr. Torres's leadership, he had recommended that, to the board, that we have a multi-year study to investigate whether or not using the SAT in the admissions process changes who applies and gets accepted to IMSA as well as who matriculates and achieves success at IMSA. The study was conducted under the direction of Dr. OIR colleagues, Dr. Amber Sitzel Pareja and Dr. Hannah Anderson. I'd like to welcome them to offer some opening remarks and then you'll see we have questions for discussion.
With that, is this working?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Was that the only purpose on admissions? It wasn't on outcomes?
It's also on outcomes as well. Yeah.
All right. I don't know how Hannah and I are going to share a microphone. Okay, can you hear me?
Why are we sitting this way? I mean, we're, it's not there. Can't we arrange this differently so that we're not like?
Yes, you can also pull it up on your screen. Do you want me to?
But wouldn't it be better?
We'll try to do something. You don't know how many of the public were going to show up and so it's to project to the public. And I see it's, normally we have it on our screens, but we certainly will work, we will work with, we will work with IT and.
I don't want to sit here next to them.
Want to sit over there, Paula?
We're here, Paula, there's empty chairs. There are empty chairs over here so you're not squeezed in over there.
That's kind of a dangerous one there, right?
So we actually don't have all that many slides because obviously I know that you all want to have a lot of time for discussion. So this is probably about, you know, a fifth or even less, probably a tenth of what I would normally present in one of these presentations, but I will, we'll make it quick. So good morning. We, as Dr. Glazer said, we have been looking at the SAT and the admissions process. There is also, there are questions about success at IMSA and beyond. Those questions, we really just scratched the surface and we're suggesting that we do, continue the study for over several years to keep looking at that. So, but today we're going to talk just generally about these initial findings. So as we all know, our admissions policy requires that each applicant, in order to be eligible, have a complete application file in addition to those other things that are up there. But, and in, as part of that, Bill, the next, the SAT score is, is required. As we all know, we have been experiencing a worldwide pandemic and in March of 2020, the SAT started to be canceled and it was canceled for a long time. I believe that it started up again this spring, but for a long time, nobody was allowed to take SAT. As part of that, we removed or we, we did not use the SAT in the admissions process in the spring of 2020 and in the spring of 2021. So this provided us with the opportunity to look at the, how the SAT influences our admissions process. Can you go to the next slide, please, Bill? So. The, as Dr. Glazer mentioned, the purpose of the study was to investigate whether or not using, utilizing the SAT changes, who applies, gets accepted to IMSA and who matriculates and achieves success at IMSA, as well as whether or not utilizing the SAT creates more access to and success at IMSA for students from historically marginalized groups. So we had four research questions. We will go through them very briefly. You all, I know, received a lot more information. So first, how does not utilizing SAT in the admissions process influence entrance into the IMSA applicant pool? So we asked our incoming sophomores and their families how that would have influenced them, whether it would have meant that they maybe would not have applied to IMSA because during this past admissions cycle, they did not, they knew that the SAT score would not be a part of that process. So the large majority of students and families said that it would not have changed their student's decision to apply to IMSA. And then we also asked them how they believe that utilizing the SAT, whether or not it contributes to IMSA being a highly desirable option for students talented in mathematics and science. And the majority again indicated that they did believe that the SAT does add something to that. So, oh, sorry, can you just go back for one second? So on the other side, we see that not utilizing the SAT during the entire admissions process this past year, we did see an increase in the number of applicants, especially applicants from culturally and linguistically diverse, also known as CLAD backgrounds. Now, we obviously cannot attribute the increase in applicants specifically to this, right? We had so many other things going on. However, we did see this increase. Okay, next slide, please. So how does not utilizing the SAT during selection, during the selection process influence acceptance to and matriculation at IMSA? So we looked in this case at students from the classes of 2020 through 2022. So we did use the SAT during the selection process for those students. And then we compared that to students, applicants in the classes of 2023 and 2024 to see were different aspects of the students' applications more or less influential in, in being accepted to or deferred at IMSA? So there really were not substantive changes in the likelihood of a gaining acceptance or deferral to IMSA for these applicants. And as we, what we did see however, is that when we did not utilize SAT during selection, there was an increase again in the number of incoming IMSA students from CLAD backgrounds. Again, we cannot causally say that one caused the other. And so I'm going to turn this over to Hannah to talk about success at IMSA and beyond.
So for the first part of that question, success at IMSA, we did numerous interviews and focus groups with various stakeholders, including leadership, faculty and staff, as well as some of our students. And some of the common themes that kind of came out of that is that success at IMSA is really about individual growth. Where do, where does a student start and how do they, as an individual, grow during their time here? And so some of those growths can be seen in the ways that they learn how to navigate the world, through really learning about their passions and interests while here, being able to explore those because of the opportunities that IMSA has. They're really developing those critical thinking and problem-solving skills. And IMSA's contribution to that is kind of that safety net of support that was in the document. And so that came out of these different interviews and focus groups that it's not just a student comes and they magically walk away better than what they started. But because of the supports and the resources and the people that we have here at IMSA, we really grasp onto them as a sophomore and then provide that safety net to get them to that graduation and to achieve and to grow as an individual. As far as success beyond IMSA, we partnered with Office of Public Affairs to do an alumni survey. And as part of that, we took the opportunity to ask some of these questions as far as to what extent, so on a Likert scale, to what extent was IMSA a key to your success after graduation? As well as how did IMSA contribute to this success? And then how could your IMSA student experience have been improved? As far as the key to success, about 95% either agreed or strongly agreed that IMSA was a key to their success after graduation. And then again, in those open-ended responses, we saw things that they were more prepared for that college-level coursework as a result of attending, as well as that expansion of their critical thinking and problem-solving skills as a result of their three years here. And then also a new sense of competence, not only in their own abilities, but also in their leadership skills, as well as collaboration skills as a result of attending.
So here are discussion questions that we thought of. We obviously are open to whatever you would like to ask us, whatever questions you have that you want to ask each other. This should obviously be an open discussion.
Great, thank you very much for your work on this. It's really important. And it's a great opportunity to learn more about one of the key components of the admissions requirements to IMSA. I first wanted, obviously, any trustees who have questions or discussion points really want to highlight one of our, we're fortunate, IMSA, to have an international expert on the board, Paula Schuffte-Cavillias, who's contributed significantly to the literature on on exactly this. So wanted to ask Paula if you wanted to start out with anything you'd like to dig into.
Oh, yeah, I've been involved in this, but I was wondering if you guys are familiar with the work from the study of mathematically precocious youth?
So I have seen some of the findings. I haven't delved into them, but yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I have seen some of the findings, yes. I've looked at it.
So the people who do that, it's at Vanderbilt, and it's a study of kids who have taken the SAT in seventh and eighth grade nationwide, and then they're followed up. They've been followed up, actually, they're in their 50s and 60s now, which is really incredible. They've got this longitudinal study. I asked David Lubinsky, he's a good friend of mine, he's the primary lead on that study, to send me some articles that he thought all of us could read, because some of us are more interested in statistics than others on this topic. And he did. So I will forward them to you and Evan, or I don't know if you have your email, Amber, but I'll forward them to Evan and you could even.
That'd be excellent.
So you might want to talk with him, just because I think he'd be interested in what you're doing, because it would add to his understanding and he could add to ours. So, I mean, this is a huge study that's been going on for many years. And just to give you all a little preview, it shows how the predictive validity of the scores on kids for achievements in adulthood, which is, you know, rare in education research, right? Anyway, that doesn't mean that we should continue to use it. I'm just saying that there's a whole lot of research background that you might want to familiarize yourself with just because of the nature of the work that we're doing, because it relates exactly to younger kids taking these tests. So for me, the thing that stood out was, one thing I wanted to ask you, and I don't know, Evan, if you sent everybody what I got last night. Okay, okay. Is one of the things, because this is kind of a natural experiment that came our way just because of circumstances, right? And so one of the things I'm kind of interested in, in you guys adding to your analysis, would be understanding the admissions process. Because I don't know, I mean, I know there's been increased efforts to really target underrepresented kids in terms of our outreach. And I don't know, you know, that might change from year to year. And in fact, the results of the study would show increases for Latinx students, but not Black students, might change what the admissions department chooses to do in the next year, given that there wasn't an increase for African-American kids. So just to somehow factor that into your analysis, if possible, because the disadvantage of this study is that it's a natural experiment. The advantage of this study is that it's a natural experiment, you know, it's real life. So that would be one suggestion. And then the other thing I think is, I'm glad to hear that it's a year-long study, it'd be very, or multi-year study. It'd be very interesting to see if these results hold up as far as admissions and whether they change depending on what the admissions department does. The other factor, and I don't know, I don't remember the actual process for how the kids, how all the data is put together and then decisions are made. Because that might be another thing to think about in terms of how you look at this.
Yeah, I think putting in an explanation of the review committee process would be very helpful.
Yeah. Yeah. And then I think one of the issues that is going to be most important is to decide what our outcomes are. As you go forward with this study and you look at this first class and maybe, you know, when they graduate, what you're going to look at in terms of outcomes. Because I, and you raised that in your PowerPoint, just that there's many things that you could look at. And now is the time to kind of figure it out, because you may want to use some kinds of assessments at this point for these kids that we're not using currently, so that you can measure it.
So, yeah, I was just going to speak to the admissions process a little bit. So I've served on review committee for the last about three years, I think. And I know we've talked with the admissions team about the RCE score, but more specifically the adjusted RCE.
What does adjusted mean?
Yes. So when I calculate the adjusted RCE score, really it's a Z score, right? So each team is made up of about three to four individuals who review the file and come to a consensus for an RCE score. But let's say one team is a little bit more harsh in their rating compared to another team. And so what that Z score does is it puts everyone on a standard scale, so that then we have a better comparison. But we've also talked about how do we, how do we account for that and the diversity of the teams? So I know this year specifically, the admissions team was very diligent about increasing the diversity of the admissions review committee and providing cultural competence training and things with Dr. Coleman. And so, you know, we have a conversation about how do we incorporate some of those components even into that adjusted RCE score, which is then used during selection.
So thanks. I want to say something really quickly. So this year, or last year, I had asked the, so the missions is one of my areas. And so we, one of the goals was to step back and look at the entire missions department through an equity lens. So that's policies, procedures, everything. And so to Hannah's point, what we did this year, because we were virtual, we were able to cast a wider net for review committee. So we had not been able to do that. So we had a much more diverse review committee than we had in previous years. And then a part of that process was, that had normally not been for training with the review committee, was what I brought in Dr. Coleman to do equity training. And then this year as well, I brought in Dr. Coleman to do equity training for the entire admissions team. So when it came to outreach and outreach efforts. So all of that was very intentional for this long-term strategy we have for the admissions department, so.
Yeah, that's a good point, because, because you were virtual, you were able to reach more kids. So then the question is, are the increases a result of the outreach versus not using the SAT score? And it's going to be difficult to parse, parse that out.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we'll ever be able to answer that particular question. I don't, I don't think we can ever necessarily answer that question, obviously.
It's, I think, though, yeah, you probably can't parse it out, but it has to be noted when you write your results.
Right, yeah, it's definitely a confounding variable.
Can I ask some follow-ups?
Yes.
Obviously, Paula put her finger on it. Study like this is a correlative study. You didn't actually, you weren't able to control all the factors of the things we just talked about are important. But when you were looking at your odds ratios, you know, and saying it's very predictive, when you drop the SAT and then it looks like the interviews become more important, it struck me, it's a little circular, because you have this admissions committee looking at fewer elements and just saying to themselves, which one am I going to use for acceptance? So because you are, it relates to the question Paula said, because your endpoint was acceptance, you know, when you change the material that you have to choose from, of course, it's going to be more predictive of, you know, the choices that you make. So I think you have to be aware of that as well when one's thinking about, you know, dropping SATs and what the impact is. So there's obviously, you know, a lot of complicating factors there. Although I would say that because you didn't get some big change, right, that the predictions seem to fall in place, it does, to me, still argue that dropping SATs is not something that's going to be detrimental to IMSA as you move forward. It's the same thing that universities have been starting to do as well, dropping the GREs for the same reason, for graduate school transfers, because there is a cultural bias in them and it's not always predictable success. So I want to second the other thing that Paula said, which is your real endpoint is success. You know, at the end of the line, it's not acceptance on some level, right? It's, it's of those students you accept.
Definitely, yes.
So I don't want to divert the conversation completely, but what's most fascinating to me is what I mentioned before, which is the feedback you got about what IMSA gave to students in a positive way and what IMSA did not give to students that they felt they needed. And I personally would love to see you dive into that more, because there were some real action items there, like peer-to-peer mentoring, you know, a lot of really specific suggestions that I thought were really great that came out of your study. And so I'd love to see that highlighted more. I was always going to ask if you had a slide, you know, with suggestions that came out of this study.
Yeah, unfortunately, given, sorry. Unfortunately, given the amount of time that we had to present, we didn't.
I understand. And obviously, it could be for another time. I just, so at the end of that, I just wanted to commend you, because I think you actually got a lot out of this study, even given, you know, the constraints that you were under.
So one of the things we're finding at the university, when we are not requiring the SAT test, is we're not getting those math and English scores to use for placement. Are you having the same issue? How did you decide on math and English placements without those scores?
So we have placement tests that we have students actually do. And so, yeah, to your point, that's, it's critically important that we continue to do that. However, we're also thinking about looking at those placement tests through a lens of equity. So we're relying on those placement tests to get the students into the appropriate courses and levels.
So in a normal year, you're using the SAT test and the placement test?
Yes.
Isn't that redundant?
That's a good question, because as we look at our work through a lens of equity, I have personally asked those questions. And so these conversations are really important, because they are things that at first glance, people would look at and say, yeah, we need to do this in order to solve this problem. But it doesn't quite work that way, because it's deeper than that. There are practices and processes involved, so we have to keep digging deeper. So thank you for asking that question. We are continuing to look at that.
Can I jump in?
I've had my hand raised for a little while, so just wanted to bring that to the chair's attention.
Yeah, thanks, Ty. Again, just a reminder, I can't see you, so go ahead and jump in. Raise your voice, because I can't see your raised hand. Go ahead, Ty, and then Eric, and then Paula.
Well, first, I wanted to just commend the group for, for bringing up this conversation and for this study. I think it's, it's a critically important study. And for, for having this conversation about admissions and testing and expanding it into thinking about how the, the admissions review process happens. I've served on that committee a couple of times. And just in serving on that committee, I can speak to just from, you know, without disclosing much, that the SAT score, it's, it's a point of information to say, it's like a bar you jump over and then we just talk about all the other aspects of the, of the application. So it's not really something that, it's not something that, just from a committee perspective, that I recall spending much time on at all. And when I think of the diversity of, of those groups, I think of the knowledge that comes from recognizing the resources available to applicants and trying to parse out the extent to which students are availing themselves of their local resources. And, you know, how much they would be able to really take up the challenge of what IMSA could offer them. And I think that that's, I mean, I think that that's something that is, is something that IMSA folks would talk to as they're going out around the state and, and talking about the promise of IMSA and what would be offered to IMSA students. It's just thinking about the opportunities of the academy and thinking about the extent to which students would be interested in those different opportunities. So just from an equity lens, I think about not necessarily, you know, thinking about, are the SATs keeping people out? And so I'm glad that the study is here, because it sounds like the answer may be, yes, it has been discouraging some students. Thinking about, is it redundant to have an SAT and a placement test? As someone who has been through grad school, the GMAT test is the one that I took. And the GMAT was a predictor of how you do in your first semester of graduate school. And it wasn't a predictor of much else than that. So when we think about what the SAT does, it may not be more than that for, for students when they're looking at it in a high school sort of a setting. But according to what you're saying, it may be, you know, looking at that long longitudinal study, it may be something that is a Rosetta Stone of sorts. So it's not something that should be discarded entirely. But when I think about using the SAT as a placement test, I think it is a more complex situation than that, because it is a, it's a high-stakes testing environment. And a placement test can feel a lot different from a high-stakes, large-format test that has a whole American culture, history, folklore about it. And having a separate placement test, having two opportunities for students to prove what they know for placement purposes, having those two data points has probably served students well in the past. But having even just a separate test in the SAT is something that helps them to figure out where they fit as they start their academic careers at IMSA. I would think that that's something that's beneficial. So those are just some thoughts as, as I was listening to the conversation.
If, if I may, real quick, I'd like to speak to the math placement test. So I actually did a psychometric analysis of that exam for my dissertation. And I can see that SAT is very predictive of where students would score on the placement exam. What's more interesting, though, is when you break down the placement exam into some factor scores. So the Algebra I section, geometry section, and then pre-calculus, that was actually just as predictive as the SAT in where they should be placed here at IMSA. Kind of a future direction of that study, though, is kind of that future outcome. So yes, it predicts that first semester course and the success being grade received in that first semester course. But it did not look at beyond that, kind of where do they end at IMSA.
Thank you. Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you. I think, for me, I was a little confused as to how the research questions, three and four, were going to help us address the SAT, at least with the preliminary findings that we have. But I think that there's an opportunity for us to kind of get to that without having to, to wait for the, the results from the IMSA class of 2024. And I believe that could come from just doing a historical kind of report. And I believe that could come from just doing a historical kind of report on the purpose and the score thresholds that we might have used at IMSA for admissions. And then looking at associated analysis of those things with respect to those research questions three and four. I don't know if we actually had a threshold. Did we have a threshold for admittance on the SAT?
I, I don't believe that there's a threshold. I do know that prior to when we did not utilize the SAT that the applicants were discussed during the selection process in the order of their math SAT score. So assorted and the highest math SAT scores were discussed first. And then however, each applicant was still discussed. It wasn't like, oh, we've reached, you know, this level and, and we're no longer looking at applicants. Everybody is, is discussed and decided, yes. No, or well, actually, there's a pool of yes, we'd like to admit. And then it's ultimately divided into yes or wait pool.
So then in terms of informing research questions three and four, maybe we could go back and look at those. Again, I don't know if we have that kind of data, but look at the higher and lower SAT scores and see if they correlate with the research questions three and four. Because we have probably years of SAT scores from individual candidates or not candidates, but graduates now.
Good. Thank you. Elena?
So this is fascinating. I am certainly going to defer to Paula and the academics in the room about the literature on SAT, which I know is vast. My, my concern is around growth. It's kind of easy for us to bring in smart kids and when they leave they're smart because they were always smart anyway. How do we measure growth? Somebody said success. I don't know what success looks like for everybody. But I know that we should be charged with growing these students. And so the proxy for growth for me had always been my SAT score, right? When I tested to get an IMSA, it was this, and when I got out, it was that. But I think there's probably a better way to measure growth and that's what I'm interested in. Like how are we holding ourselves accountable to growing these students? And what, if it's the SAT and that's viable, okay. But if it's some other way, I think we need to be very proactive and thoughtful in that regard. Because I think that should be our, our charge. We're getting a lot of smart kids and they're leaving smart. That's great.
Yep.
I don't know if we've done anything to aid that if we're not measuring their growth.
Growth.
Thank you for what you just mentioned because the other thing to think about is we need multiple sources of data to actually be able to determine whatever we, we want to determine. And it depends on the purpose for which we're trying to use the, the tests and things like that. But I just wanted to jump in and say, um, we've been thinking about competency-based or mastery learning approach. That would really help in thinking about the individual students and what success means and things like that. But again, that's something that we're going to collaboratively continue to work on and look into. But to your point, that's one of the ways or assessment that we can use that would help us better look at student success.
Well, and over several years, we've used what used to be called the college and work readiness assessment. Now they've changed it to college and career readiness assessment, which is, uh, basically measures, um, problem solving, critical thinking and problem solving skills. Part of the problem that we have with using the SAT as a measure of growth is that we have quite a few students who come in with a 750 and above, a 730 and above on their SAT math. And so that doesn't really enable us to look at like, okay, so they came in at an 800, they left at an 800. What does that tell us? So that is one reason why we generally don't look a ton at the SAT in terms of growth.
So also for the CWRA plus, I know we've had a deep dive with the board in the past about student engagement and kind of taking that exam seriously and putting their best foot forward. But I'm looking forward seeing these alumni responses and the resounding number of them who are saying the critical thinking and problem solving skills that they have developed while here at IMSA throughout all of their coursework. I would really like to see a communication strategy come out to our current students to say, listen, this is your alumni looking back on their experience and this is what they've gained. And that's what that assessment is trying to measure. It's looking at those softer skills. And so trying to communicate that to our students so that they can really understand what does that mean for them? And how can they leverage that particular score moving forward only, not only on college application processes, but then also as they move into their careers. So I would like to see some more development there as far as communication to our students about previous experiences and kind of what that exam can do for them.
All right, great. Paula, go ahead, and then I think we're going to try to move on.
One of the reasons that the SAT is used with younger students, because of course it's typically taken by college juniors and seniors.
Right.
Is because so many of these kids are actually so far ahead.
Yes, yes.
Of the information that it has to offer. Because there are so many kids, as you say, who come in with really high scores. Their reasoning levels are four or five years above what would be expected for their grade level. So one of the reasons they use the SAT is because it is useful for knowing where a kid is at and where they might begin their instruction. I don't know that we take that into consideration so much in our use of the SAT at IMSA. It's interesting to hear you talk about more of the sub-scores and how those might be useful in terms of placement. I would suspect that the placement tests that we give are probably have severe ceiling effects because of what we're, you know, measuring.
Yes.
So that's wrapped an issue.
Yep.
I think the, the, the question is, can the SAT show growth? It can, depending on where a student starts, of course. There are kids who are already at the ceiling of the task even as eighth graders and it's not going to show growth. My preference frankly, especially for our CLED students, is that they take it every year. Because if it's going to continue to be a gatekeeper in any way at college, then the more practice the kids have under low stakes conditions is good for them, you know? I mean, we'll see how that atmosphere changes as we go forward, depending on what colleges and universities decide to do. But my experience, because I do this with seventh and eighth graders, is that those are the kids who are most in need of practice on the test so they understand what they're facing in terms of college entrance. And so I don't think it's a bad idea to have kids take it repeatedly for practice.
I think I would just second that briefly too, not only additional practice, but then also just increasing their test wiseness as a student. So of course, we look at that when we're developing our exams, but then what does that look like for a student? And how can they leverage that to score on the SAT?
I just want to mention really quickly that if we, if we do do that, we need to ensure that we are doing some programming to support students as a result of what is the test is telling us. Because I do know not too long ago, parent was very angry because IMSA is not providing SAT support for students. So it's a great idea, but we also have to think about next steps to go with that.
I'm not talking about SAT prep. I would say that this would change our curriculum necessarily if we're focused on the right things to begin with.
Yep. I'm agreeing with you Paula in saying it means that we'll have to look at the results of the test to inform what's going on with students in the classroom, curriculum instruction and so on. So thank you.
Before we end, I just want to make a comment that in an unusual way, I disagree with Paula on this. From the point of view of universities, I think the trend and I hope it will continue is to drop those kind of entry scores because they're multiple choice and they don't actually assess anybody's ability to think. And I think what you were talking about, the other skills and the way of assessing these other skills and the growth you were talking about would not actually be seen to me on an SAT. It's a different kind of growth that we would be looking for. So this is obviously a big discussion and something that we need to talk about in the future. But I would not want the IMSA spending its time focusing on, on SATs.
So thank you. This is what's a nice thing about the.
Yeah, before you close, um, I just wanted to underscore that a little bit. And I, I would hesitate to, um, to, I don't know, to increase the emphasis on the SAT for all of the reasons that we're talking about without providing students some sort of a context for, um, for additional supports that we're offering them for the test. Understanding that, that there's bias cooked into it and that it, it is responsible for widening achievement gaps to send students into environments where we're trying to strengthen them in taking the test without having them have an awareness of why, why it matters that they have an awareness of, of what's going on with that test. I think that that, it, it wouldn't serve our students well, if that makes sense. So we're talking about taking the test out because of the harms that it, it can possibly provide while recognizing that there is usefulness in the data that comes out of it. And it seems like we're leaning into, but there's so much good that we can learn from it. Why not double down on it? Because we're able to break off the ceiling for a lot of our, our high performing students. There's so much good in it, but there are some harms that, that persist with an overemphasis on, um, on.
Come here.
Pouring that into different aspects of, of measurement.
I just have to make one last comment and that is I want everyone, I caution people on talking about the SAT with respect to the word bias. The research literature is very clear that the test is not culturally biased. The fact that there are mean differences between groups of students is not an indication of bias. An indication of bias is whether the test predicts differently for different groups of students. And there's no strong evidence that that's the case. I just want to be clear about that because we throw that term around a lot. And I know parents use it and, 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 you know, I think we have to be careful about what if, whether we use it or not, we have to be careful about what it is and what it isn't. That's all.
Well, this is a little bit like a, a good Netflix series. We're, we're in like, uh, season one of, uh, like a six season drama that's got some, it's really important. And so, you know, this is like, Paula says, is a natural experiment and you got, you're taking advantage of that and that's what IMSA should be doing. So thank you for that. And I really appreciate the question, research question number three about what is success at IMSA? And how are we going to, uh, how do we predict that? What is predicting that? So, um, looking forward to the next season of, um, uh, data that you're going to bring around all of these research questions. So thank you very much for, uh, for your time and your preparation and contributing to the, uh, knowledge about IMSA.
Thank you for having us. It's been a pleasure.
All right, so, um, that was a great discussion. Our next agenda item is the report of the president. Go ahead.
Good boy, come. Okay, come.
Can somebody mute please? I hear them talking to their dog, I think, or their cat.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. I just wanted to make a, this is I have a bias against the height of that microphone right there, so. Anyway, thank you, Dr. Aaron Roach, for your, uh, your guidance and your consultation during the transition. Also want to extend that thanks to the rest of the board for your support during this transitional time. The work could not have been done without the awesome support work and drive of the Ms. Tracy Ellis, Ms. Katie Berger, Dr. Alfreda Quanji Anderson and Ms. Alexis Thomas. Their support was invaluable to the transition as we are, we're moving us forward in preparation for where we're going in the future. I also want to highlight, this is not in my report, but as when you all came, you all saw the, the care that was being taken by wiping down your surfaces and making sure that you are safe. And you had a clean, uh, clean workspace that you have in front of you. The facilities team has, has been the unfunged hero in, uh, during this pandemic. And I just want to make sure that, uh, Chris Cornsey and his staff are properly recognized. Because not, not only do they do that for you, but I know that Maria does that for my office every day. And not only my office, but all the offices in the Center for Teaching and Learning, wiping down all of the surfaces. So that's just how that, that job has changed over the course of the year. And I just want to make sure that people are properly recognized for their work. I will give you a couple of highlights from my report and then, um, we'll move on forward from there. Katie Berger and her team put on a successful and a very engaging senior week. And just to give you what's not in the report, um, at graduation, I can tell that it made an impact on the students' lives as they walked up and they had the smile on their face and they were very happy to receive their diploma. And as we talked around, as we were going through the energy of the day, which is something that I will never forget. Because as you all know, we are all, all in this for the students and for the experience and for the, to help the students develop. And I think just talking with them, being with them and seeing their smiles and their, their faces on their day was made an impact on me. So everything that, uh, Katie Berger, her team, uh, the, the input from the faculty and the RCs to make that thing happen is very, uh, it should be, something should be applauded and, uh, you know, should go down in the folklore of history. You know, we were actually able to do this successfully, uh, give a good experience for our students. Also, um, we, we should, we're not celebrating this enough, but we have, uh, Ms. Alexis Thomas has done, made this vaccination available for not only the, the, um, employees or the staff, but also for the students as well. She's had, uh, three successful vaccination clinics this summer. So we are really trying to really make a push so that we return in the fall and making everything, all the supports available for that. And, uh, kudos to that as well. And I'll end there and I'll leave the rest and submit it as information. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson, I have truly appreciated getting to know you and working closely with you during my transition. We would schedule weekly meetings to constantly be up to date with what was happening with the academy. And I appreciate all the momentum that you built, the positivity in your remarks and just, uh, being fun to talk to. So we, uh, Storm and I have one common favorite team in the Georgia Bulldogs. Spending, both of us spending time in Georgia. So we reflect and, and talking about things that go beyond school matters and we appreciate that time together. And then we also have teams that are different, so it's fun to engage in friendly dialogue. In fact, on my first day, so this is now officially my second week, or I just finished two weeks. I can't tell you how delighted I am to be here and how welcomed I have felt since my arrival. Although the first day, a funny thing is I came in with my mask. And at the time, it was my favorite, uh, baseball team. So as I walk around, you can imagine I was getting some cheers and some jeers depending on who I was talking to and their own allegiances. So Storm and I have a different allegiance when it comes to our baseball team. So quickly, I was asking, where do I find an IMSA mask? Because really, we're all on the same team, right? So I'm fortunate to actually find three different versions of the IMSA mask. And I wear them every day proudly in and out of school because I'm so excited to be part of our academy. So I shared a, a report with you about some of the, my transition plans and have created an onboarding plan for my first three months as I get started. And also I've shared in my notes, some of the activities that I've been doing prior to my arrival on July 1. Since my arrival, I have shared priorities with the community. But first I want to give recognition to the cabinet and the senior leadership team. They have, uh, in order to help me really understand the depth and complexity of the work, each respective. each respective leader on the senior leadership team has created a briefing that has given an overview of their mission, recent accomplishments, the collaboration that they have across departments, how they view their work within equity lens, and challenges and goals that they have on the horizon. And I deeply appreciate their efforts to do that. Special kudos to Ms. Thomas, who created kind of the framework for that. But having a briefing of all the different departments is incredibly helpful. And seeing their commitment throughout the summer has been really fantastic. I can't thank the cabinet enough for everything they're doing and the patience they have for my volumes of questions as I understand the depth and richness of the academy. I've shared three priorities with the community. One is to deeply understand IMSA and the people who make it amazing. Two, to reopen school in person, not just operationally in a safe manner, but also culturally, and to build on our equity and excellence plan. And during these two weeks, I've, as I've started, all three of these have continued to remain as personal priorities. And, you know, just as an example, as referenced before, we have summer programs that started in person this past Monday. The energy is palpable. I mean, you walk around the school, you can talk to kids, you talk to teachers, you can see their excitement with the, both the Excel program for our rising 10th graders and our Accenture programs from the Center of Teaching and Learning. Some of the, you know, fun things that I learn as I talk to people is all the connections that they've had with IMSA. Whether we have people who have family members who are part of Excel right now. We have alumni who are teaching Excel. We have parents, alumni who are parents, sending their children to our Center for Teaching and Learning programs. So, right now, for example, we have grades three and four, we have Dream City. Grades five and six, we have CSI, well, CSIMSA, which I think is combining CSI and IMSA together. Forensics, grades five and six. And then Gold Medal STEM, which is looking at, you know, the science of athletics as we anticipate the Olympics, so for grades seven and eight. And so, it's really fun and energizing for faculty and for our students to be on campus. Even returning students, serving as mentors, as tutors in the Excel program. It's really, the students are already approaching me and we're just talking about some of the fun things that they love about IMSA and also coming back. They're also teaching me lots of terminology, IMSA terminology. So, I would say like my greatest challenge is getting covered with all the acronyms that we have established here. Acronyms and initialisms. I have four pages, but I've learned there's always new ones. So, the students have told me about the term schmen, which are students who skip their freshman year and super schmen kids who skip two years. And I'm sure there's so many, there's so many more that I'll continue to, to learn. But anyhow, that's been tremendously fun. I wanted to offer, you'll see reference on the dashboard, kind of progress and some data through July. We have there are six areas where we have achieved, achieved or exceeded our targets. So, I just certainly want to give mention to those and recognition to the people who are involved. So, under the categories of developed educator STEM proficiency, as we think about the impact in educators' practice, that first category. And that's led through Storm's team and the Center for Teaching and Learning. And then Erin, Dr. Roach has, had referred earlier to just the number of contact hours of non-IMSA students for STEM instruction, which is extraordinary, over, over 20,000 this past year. Also, in the category of strengthening identity as a learning laboratory with our current, with, with this last year's theme of United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, the number of contributions from IMSA community members, anybody of knowledge. We have exceeded that goal. And the number of new IMSA tools our curriculum created, we've exceeded that goal, thanks to Storm's team. And on, on the second page, the, under the category of operational capacity, the amount of IMSA reserves, we have exceeded that goal. And so, you'll hear from Kimberly Correa on the financial report. We've also, on the, with alumni, we've exceeded the goals, the number of alumni engaged, thanks to Alexis Tammy and their team, and number of additional partner organizations at IMSA. So, I'm really proud of the work of the cabinet and staying focused while they juggle so many priorities right now. So, I just want to offer some appreciation for that work. Thank you. Great. Well, thank you for that report and the board very warmly welcomes you to IMSA. Next is our, I know we're a little bit beyond time, so we're going to try to squeeze in quickly our last couple of items. Kimberly Correa is our treasurer and has the financial highlights to report to the board.
Hello, everybody. I'll be real brief. The financial highlights presented and provided is for activity through the end of June. So, currently, I'm estimating a surplus of 479,000. I also have specified in the board reports what I'm estimating we're going to utilize of our EAF appropriation. We'll end up lapsing 967,000 of our EAF appropriation. That was expected. And I guess for some perspective, that is a little bit less than what we normally would have paid for our food service bill on a given year. So, the fact that we were a distance learning all year as opposed to having students here in person, it kind of points to the reasoning as to why we're, we're lapsing because we certainly don't want to misuse state appropriated funds for things not important to the mission of the academy. Cash reserves, as pointed out, we're gonna, we ended at June 30th, there's about 5.9 million. So, those were really the, the main highlights I wanted to point out. I did have an update on a topic that came up at the last board meeting about ESER. We did, have been doing a little bit of research on this. Our chief strategy officer, the Alexis Thomas, had been talking with the governor's office. And we do know that IMSA does not qualify as a tier one school for ESER. However, we may qualify as a non-tier school. And on my end, I now have a contact at ISB. I was working through my contacts at the Board of Higher Ed to kind of hook me up with someone there. And they're looking into whether IMSA possibly may qualify for ESER funding. So, we are actively continuing to find out as much as we can about that. Because IMSA is kind of that in between. We're not under ISB, we're under IBHE. So, we're continuing to research that. We do know that IMSA qualified and will be receiving what they're calling GEAR 2.0. We'll be getting another 250,000 in FY '22. And we're just kind of waiting for the paperwork on that to come through. And then the last thing I have is related to something that was put in the executive content for all of you regarding revolving door provision of the Ethics Act. Just a friendly reminder, there's a form in there that I would like everyone on the board to make sure you review, sign, and please email back to me. And that information should be provided in there. And then I'm open to any questions.
Why did the, what accounts for the big increase in grant funding from government sources?
A decrease mostly in funding from non-government sources this past fiscal year.
Can I ask about the strategy on private source funding from a grant perspective? Is there, is there a strategy? And where, what's our trajectory on seeking grant funding from private sources?
I don't know if I can speak in specifics on that. I do know that for this past fiscal year, what typically we would have received in funding from private sources, from the IMSA fund, was kind of held aside in the event that IMSA ran into some budget issues. So, that's why that money was never awarded. Am I articulating that properly in terms of the agreement between the board and the IMSA fund?
I guess I'm looking at two separate line items. There is the IMSA fund that has private sources. And then I saw grant funding that I thought was separate at the IMSA level of 8%.
That is, but that does flow through from the IMSA fund as well.
It flows through from the IMSA.
Yes, it's just that IMSA fund money that is, they've received from BP or UpComEd.
Then this is a point of clarification for me. Is there an opportunity for IMSA to directly solicit grant funding from private sources, not through the IMSA fund?
Sure, we, we certainly could, but we would be working with our development office and the IMSA fund to spearhead that. That's kind of their area of expertise, but the academy certainly can receive funding directly from private sources.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up actually on Elena's question, and then I have a separate question. But for example, like when we're solicited, right, through any kind of drive, we're always directed to write the check to the IMSA fund. So, to Elena's question, is it most of the fundraising that we do even for IMSA through the IMSA fund?
Yes, that is correct.
So, while you could get, you could have BP write a check to IMSA, most of the time, I've never, I've always, I've always heard it's been directed to the IMSA fund.
That's correct, because there are our foundation and our fundraising.
From a fundraising perspective, the purpose of it flowing through the IMSA fund is for stewardship and recognition purposes. So, then in our annual fund, in our annual fund report, in the recognition plaques you see when you first come into the lobby, that we're able to capture those particular donors. Now, if what you're speaking of is intergovernmental grants, that's a different animal, right? Our, okay, so you're, you're speaking of private. Yep, yep. So, the reason they come to the IMSA fund is so we can capture stewardship, we can follow up with grant reports, and we can recognize the donors.
I'm sorry, so if they didn't come through the IMSA fund, we wouldn't be able to recognize them?
We would, we would. It, it's, you know, we have our IMSA, our foundation and our development office for that area of expertise and raising funds for the support of the academy. So, to have kind of two competing initiatives of raising funds, you know, we kind of look to the IMSA fund staff with their expertise to work on that. But there's nothing that would prevent the academy from receiving an award directly from any institution. And we could certainly recognize them for that donation.
Kathleen, you had another question?
Yeah, I was just trying to tie two of the statements together, and I just, I think I'm not looking at them correctly. So, in the operating budget summary document, in the first section to the left, it has EAF income local. And when I look at the income and the local revenues, and then I compare that to the numbers on the summary of the fiscal year 21 financial results, the EAF ties, but then the income is different as well as the project fund. Am I, am I not comparing apples to apples here? We could maybe just look at the income, so in
Which reports are you looking at, Kathleen?
So, the, the one that's called the Fiscal Year 21 Operating Budget Summary.
Okay.
And so, on this one, the income, for example, it says total revenues is one, basically 1 million. And then if I go to the document called Summary of Fiscal Year 21 Financial Results.
Yes, that's just expenditures only, that report.
Okay, so why wouldn't it then tie to the direct expenses instead? On this one, it would be 323 versus 404. Because there are indirect expenses that are contributed using the income fund? Okay, so the 323 plus the 81?
Do you mind if we continue the conversation?
Okay.
Okay, it's more of a technical nature. Okay.
Yeah, I could come up and see you after, and we can go through it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Kimberly. This is really helpful, and I know it's been really a challenge to get everything done during COVID. So, appreciate your, you and your team's work. Okay, we'll move on to our liaison reports. The liaisons to the board are very important to the board and really appreciate the reports that are sent ahead of time. And we read those, and then we'll also invite our liaisons to spend one or two minutes just highlighting something from the report that's really important for the board to hear. Our first liaison is the faculty liaison, is Dr. Eric Reckberg here. All right, we have his report. The next report is from our student council liaison. Is it Jacob Bachhausen, or CH?
Jacob is actually here on campus, serving as an Excel tutor. So, he regrets that he is not able to join us. He had some responsibilities at this time, but he will be at the September board meeting.
Okay, terrific. And that, please say, from the board, thanks for him, to him for being a tutor. Our PAC liaison from parents is Ms. Maria Ramos. Ms. Ramos, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, and welcome to everybody. We would like to welcome Dr. Glazer to IMSA and look forward to meeting with him and working with him in this upcoming school year. We also have been taking part in the in-person sophomore orientation sessions that have been going on at IMSA. So, we have some current and past exec board members, as well as committee chairs, who have been our ambassadors to share information to the parents of incoming sophomore students. And we have been very excited to get to meet some of them, let them know more about the PAC, answer questions that they might have, as well as answer questions about what it's like to have your child at IMSA. So, that has been a wonderful experience for us. But it's also given us the opportunity to be able to get signups for volunteers for this upcoming school year since our executive board and our committee chairs have been hard at work at the planning already for this upcoming school year for programming, as well as initiatives for being able to continue to provide programming both in person and also to continue what we've been able to do this past year was to involve more families in offering more things in virtual settings. So, we can continue to support families who may live further. So, again, we look forward to all of that. And we have also scheduled out our meetings for the year and are excited to be able to have our first one earlier than we have in the past. So, that we are actually having our first meeting for the general, for the general community in August. So, we think that'll be a great way for, for families to connect, excuse me, as well as for us to be able to answer any last minute questions and offer any last minute tips considering that there will be two thirds of the population that will be new to campus this year. So, we're looking forward to that as well. So, we are just looking forward to being able to continue to support IMSA and the families as well as the staff and faculty as we've done in the past this upcoming school year. So, again, thank you for this opportunity for us to share that update.
Yes, and thank you and parents for all of your extraordinary efforts this past school year, especially your Herculean efforts during senior week. It really was very successful, thanks to, to you. And just want to highlight too that you invited board trustees to the PAC Zoom meeting on August 14. And I look forward to joining there. Thank you for your, your leadership. Our next report is from the, our alumni liaison, Stefan Page. Is he on the phone? All right, we have his report. And our last report is from the IMSA Fund Board Liaison, Jacob Hummer. Is he on the phone? I did have a meeting with him yesterday, and there's lots of really good things going on there. And I'm going to mention that there, at the very end of the meeting. And I think we actually come to that point. I just wanted to start, we, a new tradition of taking a couple of pieces from our good news items to end on. Since we do have some great things going on at IMSA, I think that's the way we really should our, maybe round out our meetings. So I wanted to highlight first, one of our recent graduates, Sam Taylor, who we heard in the January board meeting. She presented and she won recently the Princeton Prize for, from the Chicago region. It's the, the Chicago Committee of the Princeton Prize in Race Relations voted unanimously as Sam as the winner. So hats off to her and can't wait to hear her come back with all her stories of success. Also, there were four IMSA juniors, Sai Rishi Bodu, Jasmine Liu, Philip Yi and Siddharth Tawari, who took place in the Blue Ocean Competition and they created this product called UtroPod that controls algae. And if you haven't seen the video, I encourage you to check that out. It's pretty impressive on how they're proposing a product that saves billions of dollars. And that's coming from our IMSA students. And then wanted to highlight the award that Dr. Storm Robinson picked up while he was at the Conference of the Global Forum for Education and Learning. He picked this up on behalf of IMSA as a top 50 organization in education, presented to the Illinois Mathematics and Science Academy Center for Teaching and Learning in recognition of their contribution to the field of education. So congratulations to IMSA and Dr. Robinson's team specifically. If you haven't yet, I encourage you to contribute to the PROMIS program that the IMSA fund is championing. The PROMIS program is led by Dr. Anita White and it supports culturally, linguistically and ethically diverse students who have interest in STEM education by providing academic enrichment programming at no, at low or no cost. I encourage you to, board members to consider making a small contribution if you like. And lastly, our next board meeting is September 15th here at IMSA. And our next executive committee meeting is August 18th here at IMSA, I believe. And all trustees are welcome to join the executive committee. Anything else before we adjourn? All right. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Some of- And Tracy, could you do a roll call votes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Anderson? Percy? Otter? Ossner? Nunez? Brown?
Yes.
Clark? Joseph Kavili? Yeah. Roach?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, the team to make this happen today under extraordinary circumstances. Thank you again, Dr. Robinson, for serving as interim president and welcome Dr. Evan Glazer as our new president. Thank you, everyone.